You want to go ahead and start, Mark, or do you want to... We have a few destinations.
I think a lot of our people are on vacation. Several of them are, so... But we're still waiting on one or two, but they can float in when they get here.
Okay. All right, well, lead us on.
Well, we appreciate sort of having this quarterly meeting that we typically do. We've had several contacts, and I'll let Terry go over that with you. We've made some discussion. I'll just tell you some of the things that I've done as far as on the buildings downtown. Talked with the MoCann Regional Council. They suggested the historic group set up a historic preservation. And by doing that with their 501(c)(3), they're easier to get grants. So if you want Trevor to come over here and either explain to the council or to the historic group or both, be glad to do that. But that would be the first thing that they would suggest on the four buildings.
I mean, to me, the practical society is the one who will have to make those decisions. And I don't sense any reluctance on the part of the council.
It's not even a ballgame anymore, is it? It's not even a ballgame anymore.
Well, that's right, right. That's... That would be my interpretation.
Just want to keep your rest of it.
No, I appreciate that, but I thought that might speed it up a little bit.
You bet. That'll be easier. I'll let Terry go ahead and talk about some of our other contacts that we've had this last month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just kind of go through the list of projects that we have and let you know which ones are new ones. And it's been kind of a somewhat of a busy month. Project QTC is... They're grading and has been done, and their formation of the pad. Appears to me that they're ready for the concrete for the pad. And I would think they'd be getting to that pretty soon. They're... As John might say, they're burning daylight right now. It's nice weather now, getting the concrete down, and I assume that it will be. It looks like it's preparing right at all. I spoke this morning with Randy Curdall. And as you know, his facility is just about complete. It is as far as doing business. He's got a couple of things with MoDOT that he's finalizing today and this week and next week, probably. But for all practical purposes, it's complete now. And he anticipates having a ribbon cutting, open house, whatever you want to say, call it, this fall. He's very pleased with the building. I can only speak for myself, but I think most people would agree. It's been a great addition to Cameron's, not only in business, but in the... Just the general appearance. Just really clean that up. Makes it look very, very nice from Highway 36. So he was pleased. Project Both Blooms are just progressing on. They've done the groundwork over at... I refer to it as the Old Higgins Building, the one they tore down basically. And they're working on that. And then the second one, they started on that project as well. Project Coffee is a company that I talked to, called me and asked for advice and recommendations for Cameron. They have, like I told you last time, they have signed their lease here. They've actually brought in some equipment this week, or are bringing equipment this week. I think they brought in a little bit last week. They're going to be remodeling. It's not going to take very long. This building was basically about ready to build. And they have their guy doing remodeling, and he'll start sometime this week or next week. Doesn't anticipate taking very long at all. Probably a week to 10 days. So it'll be a nice little addition to town. I kind of want to add to this. This is a project Edox has been working on and I've been working on. Show you the caliber of the board. Tony Clark has a coffee shop. And he, at no time, he's known about this, at no time has he ever spoke out against it. That's not Tony's way. I've known him a long time. But he's been encouraging about it. And I think that says a lot about the board. The reason I say that, I represent other communities. And when something is not in their favor, so to speak, I watch to kill projects. Literally kill them. And so I think, and I've noticed that all the way around. I don't know that Pam wants to bring in a new financial advisor, but I guarantee she'd second up and say, "Okay." So I just wanted to add that. Project Runway is a KCADC and a state project. I've mentioned this before, and there's really nothing new to say. It's a large project, about a $70 million project. And we have about 115 employees. It's a food processing facility, but not like a kill plant or anything of that nature. You know, food processing could be making macaroni and cheese. I'm not saying that, because I have no clue. I would expect to be hearing something from them soon. They had 27 entries from the state that went in for that project. And six of them were looking for a building. Six of them had buildings. But we haven't heard anything from them lately. So, but it's certainly yet, but I expect to hear shortly. Project Steel, and I want to say this right off the bat, especially for you, Steve. This is not a Terry Remer project. This was a Zach Johnson project. And Zach talked to the gentleman who's interested in the building, the building, the old E-truck building. People are going to be acting on it in some way. And Zach did a fine job of that. At the same identical time that Zach had it, we had what I refer to as Steel Two, which was another steel fabricator who wanted that building. We have searched high and low to find another facility for him. Have not been able to. There's still time, because he's... He actually has had a little run of bad luck. He started looking for this and for a couple of weeks. And we've talked to him sometimes. He's down in the Leeds Plant. That's where he's located. And the main building caught on fire and destroyed his business. So he, at this point, doesn't know exactly what equipment he has left, what he's got left. So he's kind of on a holding pattern. But we'll continue to look for buildings. Unless one mysteriously appears, I don't know where it would be. Surprisingly, there's another company called Project Nonprofit. It's a new project. This came to me from a real estate firm who's working with me in another community. And it's a company that's looking, that would prefer to be here. And, but again, they need a building. They need between 4,000 and 10,000 feet. We did find a building we thought might work, but it's tied up in litigation at this point. And I think it's going to be tied up in litigation for a while. They're wanting to move now. Sad part is, on this one and the Project Steel Two, they both are looking into other communities around. But they are around this area. But we had those buildings, we can get them. I can't... I'm under confidentiality. I can't tell you the name of the nonprofit, but it's a real well-known one. And it would be a good job, a good fit for the community. The other thing I'd like, if Mike would, if Mike, if you could kind of talk to us and bring us up to date maybe on the CID.
Okay.
And the highway.
And what?
And the highway.
The... About two weeks ago, I actually called a meeting just with... Invited the CID board. Also, I invited DeKalb County Commissioners. I invited MoDOT to come to the table to talk about the improvements at Highway 36 and Bob Edgrove. Again, feeling that I just wasn't making a whole lot of progress. From that day, the meeting, I had DeKalb County Commissioners, all three of them. I had two individuals from MoDOT, which is our engineer for Cameron. I had Zach Johnson was there. I had Drew was there. And basically, there was quite a bit of discussion. DeKalb County Commissioners was pretty hot, because nothing had been done for the last several years. And it's been on the TAC Committee's top priority list for longer than I've been on the TAC Committee. So anyway, we had a good hour and a half's worth of discussion. And my goal was to get MoDOT to try to engineer or preliminarily engineer that project at that intersection. Because applying for grants, when you apply for grants, you actually have to have a dollar figure or pretty close to what it would be before you can even apply for it. So through the conversation, we laughed that day. I think everybody was on pretty good terms when they laughed. They got a little bit carried away for a while, but it... Everybody got the point. Since then, I've had conversations with MoDOT. Michael Marriott, which is our representative for Cameron. And I have talked again. We sat down, I had sent them all the information from years ago, what they... What we kind of planned on that intersection looking like. And he, I think now he finally understands that that's where the money's going to be spent. Right there. Because they tend to want to take the money from there and move it on down the High 35 and the whole corridor. So he's pretty muchly got that down, that that's where it's going to be. And as we talked the other day, he said, "I'm going to talk to my people in St. Joe and see now if we can't start to kind of..." They contract out the most of their engineering. They don't have people on staff anymore. They contracted all out. But he was going to try to get staff together and try to come up with some preliminary plans and try to maybe knock some dollar numbers in there and see if we can start to move on it. Since then, there's a grant out there through MoDOT. And I've asked for the assistance of MoCann again to help with that. I just sent the paperwork off this morning, so MoCann can put that together. That would be trying to acquire money to do the engineering. I tried for one, didn't get that. So I'm trying again, and we'll see where that goes. So I have, you know, at the present time, I feel a little bit better. At least they know what's going on. It changes so fast over there. People change so quickly. And they're not ever left with any information as projects, especially something like this. So it gets lost in the cover. And you have to go back and open the cover it up and dig it out again. And so that's kind of where we're at there, and hopefully, hopefully, we'll see something proceed. We also talked about even more quickly than that is doing some more safety devices on eastbound 36, or westbound 36, I'm sorry, east of the intersection to try to slow some of the traffic down before it gets to the stop signs. Because we've had, we've been lucky. So we talked about that. And MoDOT has some funding available through just either the district or through the barn here to do things of that nature. And talked to them about eastbound 36, west of I-35, putting some more signage in there. Because that's pretty lax right in there. So they was going to take a look at that one, too. See if we can do some safety signs. Since then, kind of the west intersection of town has come up again. So I don't know. I know we had a... Actually, a planning session on that a couple of years ago. So there was a lot of information went into MoDOT on that. And maybe we even discussed it just briefly, and that was before our last accident, just briefly, as to putting up some better signage or something, or what can they do to make that more safer. So, on their dime. So, anyway, took that into consideration. Little step further, if you want to go to a different area. As I said, on the TAC Committee, I met with Clinton County Commissioners last week. And there's basically, MoDOT's doing what, basically a tier three, which is the third phase. If there's some extra money comes down the line, what can we use this money for? They have phase one, phase two, and phase three. So setting with the Commissioners, I mean, we talked about secondary and third-party roads, if you want to look at, basically the blacktops, and none of the blacktops is the worst. Some 69 highways, different things. And of course, with the big rains we had, we had a lot of issues. Safety on the blacktops is getting to be a real issue. So we put some of that in. And also, just so you know, in with the TAC, that the bridge at BB Highway and I-35 is in tier one. Has been for a while. Drew and I put that in there back several years ago. Who knows when that will be? And I know there's some discussions going on, on top of that. But MoDOT's been very muchly aware of it. But not only is BB, we have the 116 overpass, and that because of Trek Smart. And then we go on down to Holt for that overpass and that area in there because of the truck stop in there. So, you know, there's a lot of activity, a lot of money to be spent. And I always hate to say it, but nobody has it. And it costs so much to build, it takes time. And hopefully, with everybody working, MoDOT loves like 50/50 projects, that kind of stuff. If you've got cash, they'll work with you a lot faster.
And we're trying to get an audience in front of the congressional delegation as far as Holly Blunt, Graves, and then also our state leaders as far as Hegman, Brailsback, and Eggleston. Just sit them down and have a pow-wow about, you know, the area of Bob Griffin Road, both on 36 and as well as on BB. So that, you know, we're trying to sell it from a safety standpoint and from a economic standpoint. And there's those types of things they like to hear, you know, when they can hear that. And with Graves' office being, being the lead person on infrastructure, you know. We're going to work it from that angle. So just to let you know that.
I had a couple of other projects I want to discuss. One we're not getting. But there was a project that came in last week, I believe it was last week. And Tim got in touch with me and thought it was a good project. I already knew about the project. They contacted me earlier, but... And I forwarded on to Mark as well. But at first blush, it would be a great project. It's going to provide a lot of jobs at about an average wage of $135,000 a year. And it was just a great project. Problem was, we're not ready for that project. And when I say that, it was specific that utilities had to be in place. That it was going to be an incentive-driven project. And a project like this, I can guarantee you, we haven't gotten enough incentive to make that happen. That's of no fault of Cameron's, none. It's going to be, as I said, it's a big boy's project. And that's where it's going to end up. Then I was informed, about three days later. And we both told Tim, we just didn't think we had the horses for this project. That was before about three days later. Sure enough, they're really looking more for their, it's going to be their headquarters for what they do. And it would be research and development. And they want to be close to university, which makes sense. And it would be a wonderful project for Kansas City. And I hope that's the area that gets it. But it's just, it was too big a project for us. It was just a project like that, just here.
Terry, you mentioned this several times, you said utilities have to be in place. It's a big area out there, and so when you say in place...
To the park, to the edge.
Yeah, to the edge, or a couple of hundred yards in or across the street. But you mean on the property? Do we just have it on the property?
Steve, if you had, if you had the utilities to either side, Caldwell's side or the Clinton County side, on BB, or relatively close to BB, didn't even have to be right on BB, then that's, then we know, we say yes. It's 200 yards, 300 yards.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, shall we, we have to come across BB and be on the property, or just across BB?
Now, if you stayed on Clinton, for example, but you're quite a ways up towards BB, that would be pretty sufficient with the engineering to get it across the road. They want that engineering.
Okay.
So, yeah, that would work. But we're not there.
Okay. The reason I ask that is, you know, if you have to answer a yes or no, you know, you push the button on the computer. It's not on the property, it's across the street. You know, that doesn't take long to get it across the street. But if you want to move it down 400 yards, down into the middle of business park, that's a bigger proposition. So if I just take it across the street on BB, and we can do that, that'll allow you to check the block.
I'm going to check that block anyway. If you're close to, close to either side.
Are we that close?
Well, we have a little bit more to do, but yes, and part of it, we're right, we can be right across the street. We have more to do on the sewer, but I'll get a map and I'll show you where it is.
And then that, they want, they need water sewer. Sewer's really the bigger one, because water, as you know, is, you lay the pipe and go. Sewer's got a little, is a little more complicated. Second project, actually, excuse me, came in late this afternoon. And it, I just wanted to bring you up to it. I am going to put us in for this project. I do not anticipate us being involved in this project because of some of the parameters of it. And they prefer to have a, highly preferable of having a existing building and 40,000 to 80,000 feet, simple building, 20-foot minimum column spacing, which is pretty narrow. And 26-foot minimum ceiling, which is pretty low. And one drive indoor, one dock door. But they are a supplier to a part of an industry that's a big and growing industry. They are going to take greenfield applications, however. And so I'm going to put the park in for that. But again, I have, they need about 20 acres. They just have a feel that they're going to work somewhere in those lines.
What's greenfield application? What's that like?
No building.
Yeah, just green space.
Green space. And we certainly have green space.
Well, I would have understood green space.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have said maybe green space. So I am going to put that in. And again, that just came in this afternoon. And they have probably 20 questions to answer, but we'll put that in.
We also, working with the amphitheater group, there's August 24th, there's a Zoom-type seminar that they're going to be in on. Terry and I are going to be with some of them. And so that they understand the NAP grant and the process in submitting the grant for tax credit. So that's one thing. And then another thing, being on the MoCann Board, I saw where there was a Missouri Arts Council grant that might possibly be benefit Gina Reed's group. So I passed it on to Gina Reed. So we've done that. And she, I'm just going to let her follow up with it. She said she was going to get it in the right people's hands, you know, to do that. But I try, when the different things come up for a group, whether it's a store group, the Arts Council, us, whatever, just try and sort of pass the baton on to them. And we have had an unusual, as Terry had mentioned, about the E-Trucking building and had two or three people interested in that. It's been unusual, because typically, it's in that 40,000 to 50,000 square foot range that people are looking for. But we've, for some reason, the 8,000 to 10,000's been really popular just here recently. May just be something else. We have talked to, as Terry said, about some buildings that are available but are in a state that has to be worked out. And found out some information about that. The Cameron Mutual Building, you know, as you know, is transferred into Cameron Regional Medical Center. And they'll start that process with that. And that's... That's, I think, all we've got on just on the surface. If you've got any questions or want to point us in any direction, you know, we'd be delighted to answer any questions.
Who would be the electric supplier at that site? Who would be the electric supplier?
For the industrial park, the city. Yeah. They did a, Steve and the guy who's did a, an agreement with Farmers Electric. They're going to be the supplier.
Yeah, it was for the E-truck building. We did a territorial agreement and a customer exchange. And then the rest of it, the statute changed due to the city of Cameron's lawsuit with Farmers Electric regarding the correctional facility. So any new structures built on that property are city serviced without having to go back to the PSC.
I'm going to be the old Cameron Mumber Building. Just curious. Anybody know? Feet wide?
Are you talking where the pawn shop's at?
No, the old Cameron Mumber Building.
The old one?
By Casey's.
Right, by Casey's. Some people from Colorado own that. And we have begged, tried to do everything.
He's sitting there forever since he moved out.
I know, and they will, they really move on.
Yeah, I've called him, too.
Yeah, they won't move on it.
It's just for his family.
Yeah. And, you know, we've... We've...
Can we trade him? Give him some property someplace else? Because I thought about this the other day. I go buy it all the time, and I'm like, that needs to be something.
He's got something stored in there, doesn't he?
But, well, we can run that past Councilman and see. I don't know, you know, if you wanted to trade some of your, I'm going to, for a better term, Walmart ground or something like that, you know, that might be a possibility. But...
I didn't realize there was anything in it at all.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we have...
We've been with Adrian for what, five, six years?
Yeah, several years.
I was talking to somebody else the other day, and they were after it, too. Got the same answer we did.
He must be getting tired of it and messed with.
But, but yeah, he is, I would appreciate you bringing that up. Because we have, as Terry said, we've searched high and low on properties. We know some of the properties that are available, but they don't meet the projects. You know, it's sort of tough right now.
Usually, the project is just way too big for anything that we have presently.
Right.
But this anomaly in the last 10 days, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
I mean, there's three projects that are... I mean, there's three projects that are ten thousand feet and less. I can't tell you how long it's been since I've had that app.
I did talk to the Lowenstein's, you know, about what their course was. They're still planning on finishing that building out, the old nutrition center building. And COVID hit, and you know, whatnot, so they've just, they've just sort of not been as aggressive on that. But I thought possibly that might be something if they wanted to do, but that's, that's what we've got.
I want to talk a little bit more about the utility issue. And we talked about this in our budget meetings, about the cost of, what PVC pipe, right, being extremely expensive, and I wish Zach was here. You know, the more I think about it, I mean, the more I think at a certain point, we just got to bite the bullet and get it done. I mean, especially if, if prospective businesses are, you know, I mean, our argument is, well, we can do it really quickly, we can get it there really quickly. But just from a selling point, right, is that what you guys are seeing? I mean, it needs to be there. It needs to be considered past a certain point to show that we're all in.
Every community in the United States will tell you they can get it there.
Right.
And, and they know better. So, I mean, that's just a problem. I know it's a problem for the city. I don't envy Steve and Zach at all. But to your point, it ain't going to go down. It may go to peace eventually.
It may come down a little bit.
It'll come down a little bit on that, but something else will bring it up. It just doesn't go down. Everything we've seen, whether it be highways or the park, just past all the, the cost of it's gone up.
And I don't remember off the top of my head, Steve, maybe you know, or somebody else on the council knows, the cost of what you guys were saying, where we needed to get it to, the current cost of what it would be to get utilities out there?
Yeah, I don't have that. Yeah, we were originally talking two hundred thousand, but now we're talking seven hundred thousand. You've got it at the hospital, and we're working on an easement on the property across on the north side of that development out there, the subdivision, so you've just got to bring it across there. And then you are across the street from, from it on BB.
I just feel that we've got this asset that we've had now for a while. And it's basically, I mean, ultimately, it's no good until we get utilities out there.
That's right.
And-
Well, that, I mean, it's good, because you own it, and you've got control of it. The worst thing you can have is to say, I can get you the land, and I know three farmers, and they've got this land, I'm, that's, they won't even look at you. So you do have, you have the advantage that you own it.
But being ninety percent there is ultimately no good unless you're a hundred percent there. I mean, and I just feel like we're ninety percent there. So I, I know it's a lot of money, and I know, you know, essentially, at this point, the budget's done for this upcoming fiscal year, but I, the more I think about it, the more I hear, you know, specifically an example of a business saying, utilities aren't here, we're not even interested. I think it's something we should seriously consider at some point, regardless of price, just do it.
Well, we've been having that conversation for two years now.
Yeah, I believe it.
Well, we visited for it last year, but then with the shortage of those materials, prices went double.
I get a lot of information from the state industrial people, like he does. I see, they always send the stuff out, and see, a lot of cities are building up their sites. They're opening up the sites, they got this, and they got that. They've been lying in the weeds, maybe, I don't know, but all of a sudden, there's a lot of them popping up all over the state, just like we are. And if this would be helpful, and this is not as good as having it on the site, but next best is if we at least had the actual engineering done. This is, this is exactly where it's going to go, and, oh, by the way, this, you know. Now, we're not going to do streets, because we're at a stage right now where we get to customize the site. And let me tell you, that's very valuable. You know, we're not going to say, yeah, you can be fifteen acres, and I've got fourteen here, or I've got twenty-one here. You got to take that. We're at this point right now, with as much land as we have, we can customize it, companies like that. So if we really had the engineering plans at least, that said, okay, we're going to, to go over to the Caldwell's side, and it's going to, here's where it will be right now, and then you're going to be up there, wherever there is, and then you can figure out what it's going to cost to get it up there. As long as the city will say, we will do that, right?
One of the things we could do is, we could work on the engineering, because now, you've mentioned that, the cost of PVC has gone up, but the cost of an engineer has not gone up. We could still get them to do that, and that is in the utilities funds, and so maybe we take utilities funds out of it to do the engineering, getting the drawing in the engineers, and that's a step in the right direction, and it doesn't cost us any more than it ever did.
Well, that helps me push that button that you respond to, which is exactly what it is, and I can always answer it, no, it's not the site, but the engineering is done, and we will get it there.
I thought the engineering was already done. I thought we did that last year. We paid for the engineering last year. That's why they were ready to buy the pipe this year, because that part was done.
Maybe not.
I'll get the update on that for everybody.
Terry, you made a comment earlier, if it's within two hundred yards or something like that, then you can say that it's on. That it is onsite.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell them it's onsite. I would tell them it's, it's-
It is at the site.
It's, well, it's within two hundred.
Across the street.
Yeah.
So I guess-
They'll understand that.
I don't know how far away we are, but let's say if we're, if we're four hundred feet away, but two hundred is the magic number, then maybe we can at least get it to two hundred, so that it gives you what you need.
Sewer is more important to be as close as you can, because it's the most expensive.
Right.
And, and the hardest, obviously, to put in.
I'm just trying to see if there's a way to work around this PVC problem.
PVC is needed for the sewer too, right?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, they're not going to put it in.
Right.
They're not going to put cast in there. Yeah, I mean, if you guys have been down towards Lathrop from 116, City of Lathrop's putting in their sewer out to Trek Smart right now. So that was-
And that's a long stretch.
That project has happened within the last two years of gaining annexation, selling bonds, and putting it in, and they're in the process of putting it in, so.
They already have a sign up right there, explains to you that it's a sea level of Lathrop. The only other thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is that I've talked to some folks I know in DC regarding the infrastructure bill, and even though it's, it's not a done deal by any means, but it's getting pretty close. And Mike, as we've talked before, those communities that have shovel-ready, engineered shovel-ready projects are going to be the first ones to get hit with that money. And I think there's five hundred and fifty billion, or there's a trillion, it's a trillion dollars total, but five hundred and fifty billion for infrastructure.
Well, it's safe to say that all this up, the engineering is going to be, they're going to be, the engineers are going to be very-
Yeah, your price is going to go up when that happens.
I don't know, whether it's that project or others, we may want to evaluate and see if there's other things that we should have engineered and ready. I'm assuming that once the engineering is done, it's generally good for years. So, that might be, at least something to maybe take, put a set, take a look at.
Yeah, and as far as engineering goes, Shelley, I think the engineering down Bob at Griffin Road has been completed, if I'm not mistaken. But for the park itself, it's a company, it's losing years. Mike, I think it's- Shovel-ready money, anyway.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
It's more of a preliminary note.
Twelve-inch water main and the south water tower, we got fifty percent paid.
Sorry.
So is Bob, not Bob at Griffin Road, but Griffin Road considered shovel-ready? What do you have to hand to have it shovel-ready?
Totally engineered.
Oh, okay, but you just said you thought they had-
Well, I think the, I think the utilities have been, the water and sewer.
But not the whole road.
Right, because it's, it's been sitting there as is for quite a while. I mean, it has to be.
And we're talking about Griffin Road, not about that, but Griffin.
The gravel road.
Yes, yes. And, yeah.
In a sense, we mentioned that, and I know that's been on the forerunner for several years, but you all have a huge, or a company has a huge investment in that area. And Griffin Road is going to get used extensively when that happens, and it's coming. No matter what it looks like, anyway. But that is, that is the future, is that area. That's where the money's being made. Sales tax revenue, the business park for jobs. And I know we kick the can down the, you know, can down the road a lot, we talk about it, we don't have funding to do it, but we've got to figure somehow that we can do that. We've got to get Griffin Road paid. We've got to. I'm afraid, it's just like today, I was out in the semis, now we're driving down Griffin Road, moving from BB and over to, over the Jones Travel Mart and into Wendy's. They're pulling off there to miss the intersection, is what they're doing. Happens all the time. So, and there's going to be more of it, so. It's super important for the community. I hate to see us lose out on a lot of other positive things, because we can't find some way of doing that. And I know Mark and Terry and I have met with, with Sam Graves' office representatives, trying to look at how we can, you know, grants out there and stuff like that. And the engineering is, is, is super important, and that's why I'm trying to be in on MoDOT, because the CID doesn't have, didn't have any money at all. I mean, they can't do anything. I mean, they can't even guarantee, guarantee anything at the present time. There's a little bit of funding there, starting, but, you know, and I can't understand from MoDOT either, hey, if we're going to pay for that in the end, or the biggest part of it, why can't you spend a little bit of your funds to engineer the project, so if there's something shovel-ready, if we have, basically shovel-ready, and there's some grant money comes down, and we can latch it. You know, just like back several years ago with the water line and the, and the water tower. You know, that was a fifty percent grant. That was a lot of money. And what does that do for me as a, as a person who lives in this town? It saves me a lot.
And MoDOT has told us that they don't have the in-house engineers like you would think, but they're farming a lot of their stuff out, you know, to other engineering firms, and then just getting it back. So, that's partly the reason why.
Do we know what it would cost to engineer it, to engineer it, Steve?
Well, the, the costs to do the whole thing with, you know, curved gutters and sidewalks was four million. If we talk about just doing the paving of it, it was two million, and I think that includes the engineering. But I don't have a breakdown on it.
Maybe if we could just get an estimate on the engineering, since you think that there's a reasonable chance that there's, I mean, I was there, I think what Mike was talking about on the water line, and it was a million five or something like that. It was, it was, it absolutely served the citizens, the fact that that was all ready to go. And so, maybe we can at least have, make an informed decision on the cost of the engineering. Would that seem to be a reasonable way to approach it? Everybody okay there? Okay, well, maybe, Steve, you can find out, and just let us know on the engineering end of the Griffin Road. Thank you.
All the way, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, again, I want to say thanks to, to the chairman, to Terry, to Mike, to the other members on EDOC, because they're, they're taking a lot of their personal and professional time trying to find different ways to help the community. So again, I want to express our appreciation. Does anybody in the council have anything else? Well, we've got a council meeting in about fifteen minutes, so we'll see everybody upstairs. Thank you, and I guess we'll adjourn the meeting.